If everybody can stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Check it because we're going to hit it.
Since this is the first meeting after the election, we need a board chair. So I will accept nomination for a board chair.
We will nominate Judy Nelson for board chair?
That is ridiculous. Is that a strong second, Tom?
Absolutely.
Do we have any other nominations for chair? Hearing none? All in favor of Judy being chair?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating?
Thank you all very much.
Oh, yours.
Thank you. We'll do the call to order now, please. We'll go back up just a tad and do the call to order now. Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coons?
Yep.
Emily Lee? She's excused. Aaron Kavanaugh here. Mike Blau?
Yep, I got it here. Thank you.
And we've elected a chair. And welcome back to Aaron and welcome, Mike. It's good to have you here. So we'll carry on now. So we've just elected a chair. The next order of business is to elect a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Aaron Kavanaugh as our vice chair.
Okay, something from Mike?
I'll second.
Something from Mike? And yeah, and the others, since we dealt with everybody there. Anyone did like to nominate? All in favor of Aaron Kavanaugh being vice chair? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Aaron is vice chair. So secretary is sort of a... We've been electing a secretary for the last few years. It seems to be a ceremonial position. We have not had a secretary do anything, have we?
No.
Emily's not here to mention.
Emily doesn't want to. She needs to work.
So do we have to have a secretary?
I don't know the answer to that. But I suppose we can leave it open and I can check.
Okay. How does the rest of the board feel about that?
It makes sense not to if that person doesn't actually do anything.
I mean, or it could be a ceremonial contract. We could go either way.
I'll check on that. And if you don't need one, then it's fine. If we do, then we can do whatever we need.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. We appreciate that. Then we're going to now talk about committee assignments. And for Mike's benefit, we'll try to explain a little bit and ask.
Oh, no, I was just going to...
Yes, well, you know, we're not going to speak at the same time. So if you'd like to...
No, no, no. This is completely aside. Just aside is while you're explaining. So, Mike. No, it's got nothing to do with this. I was just going to suggest something.
Okay. Okay.
Wow. Where is Amber on making the...
So the committees are... And are the negotiations committee, which we usually have two board members sit on that. The budget committee, where we name, where we have one board member and usually an alternate because it takes a lot of work. The budget is very heavy work during October, November, December into January. The New Hampshire School Board Association delegate, there is a New Hampshire School Board Association annual meeting in January. And we usually name one person and an alternate for that. Although I do not believe we have attended as a board for a couple of years simply because of weather and a bunch of other things. We also have a couple of... We have a wellness committee that's coming up. And we've already named some. We'll review that. We've already named a board member. We'll review that at the end. And we have a newly formed sort of building committee. And we have a board member named to that, which we'll review at the end, too. Make sure you want us to go forward with that. Have I missed anything on committees? Official committees? So first up is negotiations. And this entails meeting formally with the union to negotiate a contract. We have our one-year contract for this coming year. And as soon as possible, we start negotiating for the following year. So and it's not entirely necessary that we set it tonight necessarily. So, you know, but we can talk about people who might be interested in being on the negotiating committee. Tommy would like to?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Just in terms of spreading out, do you know if Emily is interested in doing budget committee again?
That's a very good question. I did ask her and she didn't answer. So I'm assuming that in her absence, we will just, you know, appoint her and then we can rearrange these things.
Okay.
These are committees that, you know, we can fill in as we need to. Are you interested in doing budget? Is that why you mentioned that?
No. But if she wasn't, I would do it. But in that case, I wouldn't probably also do another committee.
I see.
Does that make sense?
About negotiations. And I think it all depends, too, on how that looks and feels as far as the number of meetings and how much we actually get accomplished. I felt this year's went... It just went too long, too many.
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we wait? Why don't we hold off a little bit on forming that committee and kind of get a sense of what we're thinking, so a good way, a good approach? And then talk, you know, the board come up with an approach or perhaps something a little different this year. I don't know how it's going to work out. Maybe something a little different this year and see how that works and then see who's best suited to do that negotiation. Why don't we do that? In that case, why don't we leave all the committee assignments then for another time? With budget, we'll need someone before the April meeting. And I was just going to suggest that we sort of name Emily. And I don't mind being the alternate and perhaps maybe you.
I also wouldn't be the alternate.
So...
Yeah, and then if she's not interested in it, we can regroup.
All right. So we're going to leave committee assignments. And no one is being really named to committee assignments, although we will review. Tom volunteered during, prior to the elections to be sort of the board rep on sort of a building committee to meet with Rich and Dick on things. And I know that started, we'll be having some discussions later on in our agenda. So, Tom, really thank you for doing that because I think it'll be helpful to have that board input there. And the wellness committee, I volunteered to be on and I think we'll be starting to meet sometime coming up. So I don't know when that will be, but just so people know that that's what's going on. All right. Thank you. We will move on. Opening comments by visitors. Gail?
Yeah, I'm a school nurse. Could I just ask for the board perhaps to suspend the rules when it gets to the discussion on the school day, but the final class, but it's no day discussion?
Yes, all right. So...
As opposed as...
Under new business?
Yeah. Either now or later, when it's current discussion.
You would like us not to have that discussion?
I would like to be part of that if possible.
Oh, that's okay.
She wants an open discussion.
Yeah, I'm certainly fine. Certainly having the union represented. I think we'd be fine to have anyone else. Any objections?
No.
No. Expect to be a part of that. And by being open, it'll be including you as a... It might not be open to the public. It will be open to the school, to the staff representation. To be clear. Celia?
Celia Leopold, Washington Street, Rollinsford. Will you be discussing tonight any of the health concerns that have come up nationwide? The coronavirus and school extensions? I just saw that Connecticut waived their 180 days. I was just wondering if that would be addressed.
Well, it's on the agenda and Superintendent Gonoski will be covering that as we... He'll be covering where we are at this moment. As we all know, it is a day-to-day, it's a day-to-day thing. Community, community, state by state. So he'll be doing that later. Any other opening comments? I would just like to say we had, unfortunately, it was the lowest turnout in sort of recorded history for a March vote. It is our second year of SB 2, and it was the lowest turnout. So that means it's the second year we have not had a town meeting to do our voting. And it is now... First year was very low. This year is even lower. It's unfortunate. However, it was very, very, it was very good turnout. I thank everyone who worked on getting signs out, getting voters out. It was very... All school-related issues that we wanted to pass passed, and those that we did not want to pass did not pass. So thank you all for all your efforts. It was very helpful. All right. No other comments from visitors? We'll move on. Consent calendar. We have our January board minutes, our February and March enrollment. What is the pleasure of the board on?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Turn it over to announcements and communications. We'll start with Dr. Gonoski with the COVID-19 update.
Well, before I do that, I just want to extend my appreciation and congratulations to everybody. The vote that went through, I mean, the budget passed very well, the collective bargaining agreement, the withdrawal, that just shows a lot of hard work. And it shows a lot of collaboration with the staff and the school board and the budget committee and the withdrawal committee. I think Rollinsford has a lot to be proud of, of all of those groups working together. So I think that's very well done on everybody's part and certainly a nice step for the school and for the district. So thank you very much. As far as the COVID-19 update, it literally is changing hour to hour. I have had webinars and conference calls and meetings with the Tri-City Consortium, as well as the governor, the commissioner of education. And I think I have learned a great deal in the last week and a half. What people need to remember is this is a highly contagious flu. That's what it is. It's a flu. And the fear, what they're trying to do is mitigate the extent, the speed that it comes on. What they're trying to avoid is what happened in China and Italy, where all of a sudden everybody got sick. And it overwhelmed their healthcare. It overwhelmed the infrastructure. And the efforts in the United States and certainly in New Hampshire are to slow that when people get sick, much like the flu season that we see normally. To slow that down so if people get ill, they can receive the appropriate attention that they need. At the present time, schools are... We're not looking to close. The recommendation from the governor and the commissioner is to business as usual with common sense. Now, we're looking at every single field trip. They're discouraging trips to, certainly international trips. They're discouraging out-of-state trips if they are to Washington DC, New York City, those types of things, common sense. More local field trips right now are acceptable. There's kind of a risk assessment that we do whenever there's a trip that's coming up. And we'll continue to do that and make the appropriate decisions for that. As far as school goes, we're taking every precaution. We are obviously upping the cleaning, teaching everybody, including adults, to wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, distancing between people. Most importantly probably is if you're sick or if your child is sick, stay home. That's probably the single most important thing that we can do. So those, we'll go by those recommendations. CDC and Department of Health and Human Services put out the recommendations daily. They adjust those. The other piece that we're keeping a careful eye on is that if anybody has done international travel and is coming back, then they're going to be self-quarantined for 14 days. If there are people that we identify that may be a relative or somebody that has COVID-19 or you were with somebody, then you're self-quarantined for 14 days. So reasonable precautions. Again, this is a flu disease, bacteria, so we need to treat it like that. So we're taking, as it changes, I'll be sending home information weekly, if not sooner. But we're keeping an eye on it. And at the present time, it's business as usual at school.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions on the... I mean, it's quite a media hype right now, but we're progressing. I'm just curious if the board has any specific questions.
I think being in elementary school, we don't have the... We don't have far reaches for sports or other events that are going on. I saw in the principal's notes that the Marshwood didn't have their... But they invited the sixth grade to, but they canceled that. Was that due to the...
I don't think that was...
That was a different reason.
Earlier.
Okay. So I guess not really. Obviously, I think you would keep us informed, at least the board informed, if there were any cases within the school system. I would assume that.
Sure. Are we doing anything different as far as how we maintain these buildings?
Rich and Dick and I have had some conversations, obviously upping the frequency of the cleaning, having hand sanitizer everywhere. And basically teaching the kids to up their hygiene and, you know, their hand washing and covering coughs and those types of things. It's an education for all of us. I think my hands have never been so clean. But it's a good reminder to all of us. One other thing that I might add is the guidance on events, gatherings, meetings like this, the guidance so far has been business as usual with common sense. If it's an in-district gathering, like a music concert or something like that, then that would, at this time with the risk that we have, that's acceptable and it's not meant to be canceled. If it were a... Let's say we were doing a craft fair here on a Saturday and we're pulling people in from different communities, then maybe we might not want to do that. Maybe we might want to cancel something like that. So it's looking at each thing individually and assessing the risk and then moving forward. All right?
And I believe you do send information. I believe the bus company is also doing more cleaning and...
Right. I talked to a first student. They've been very proactive in upping their sanitizing of the buses, doing it, you know, before, after, during if they need to. So obviously, you know, the cleaner that we can keep it with the disinfectant, the slower the progression is going to be.
We also heard from Cafe Services today as well.
Cafe Service, you're right. Thank you. So they're upping their protocols. So I think everybody is understanding that this is kind of a team effort.
Excellent. So any questions?
I was wondering if the building is being used at all by any groups who primarily elders would...
I know that we've got some, I mean, I can hear the basketballs now, so the adult basketball league, but I don't know about the elderly.
I wasn't sure if the building, you know, if anybody ever, you know, requested room there to use.
Yeah.
Just because, yeah.
Right. And they're still saying that the most at-risk people are the elderly and anybody that's already compromised, whether it's a heart condition or a lung condition or something that, you know, might offer them a little bit less resistance to it. So children and younger adults so far have been the least hit. And, you know, hopefully that's the case.
Hopefully it remains that way. I think we do have to keep in mind, though, that due to the definition of elderly, even though some of us don't really feel that we're born in that category, we are. And we do have a number of staff.
Well, I haven't looked at that.
We're not there yet, Tom. But we do have staff who are in that category, so we also have to be cognizant of that. We want to make sure everybody's safe.
Right.
So as it changes, I'll get the information out. And I would anticipate that that's going to be weekly, if not more frequent. And that's my update for tonight, so.
Thank you.
I will say, too, that we're hearing similar information from the Marshwood district. There have been a couple emails this week about it. They're looking into distance learning and things like that as kind of what last year's worked, but they're very much staying on top of it, just as the same way that you detailed and upping their cleaning and all that stuff, too.
Yeah, we're meeting as a, in SAU 56, as an administrative team tomorrow to talk about remote learning and what that might look like. We're not there yet. We're not thinking about doing that yet. Two weeks down the road, four weeks down, who knows? So we're having that discussion, what it might look like. The commissioner has said that if we do remote learning, then it would count as a day, just like a regular school day. And it's up to us to manage what that might look like. Obviously, it's not going to have the rigor and fidelity that kids in school, I mean, they need that experience. Nothing takes the place of humans, teachers. But that's something that we're talking about tomorrow, just to kind of get prepared.
Is the Department of Education, are they leaving us up to the districts? Or are they...
Very much so.
Making an issue?
Very much so, yeah. The CDC guidelines and the DHHS guidelines on, you know, how to manage this have been pretty useful to us, and that's something that I review every day. The Department of Education has left it up to the local districts to make many of their decisions.
It's interesting. It's a big decision because we know we have students here and in Marshwood who are dependent upon the food programs and certainly especially these students who will not do well if they don't get the instruction and the care they need and all those things. So I know it's a big decision as we go forward.
I did get an email, too, from the state food service people, saying that if there was a shutdown, they're looking at options to have limited access to the buildings to be able to provide the food to students who need it.
Great.
Just like they do this other time.
Excellent.
So that's on, you know, that's on their radar as well.
That is excellent. And I guess the last question I would have is that as you have your meeting tomorrow for SAU 56, also to keep in mind that checking in occasionally with Marshwood because we have families, obviously.
Sure.
And if Marshwood closes, it's going to make a big difference. Or if we close, it's going to make a difference to those families of students in both classes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? I know this is on everybody's mind because it's about all we hear on the radio now these days or TV. All right. I'm sure we'll have more discussions on that. Rich, your principal's update? It looked an awful lot like February's update.
Well...
That's a joke.
I figured it was still relevant. The hard thing is we have a number of school cancellations, as you know. And it seems like Thursday was just wiped off the calendar for a month or so. So, yeah, a lot of what I put into this one was just a carryover because we didn't, you know, meet. And I wanted to make sure that you did get a second look at it. A couple of things that are a little bit newer. We did hold our winter concert since our last meeting. It was Mr. Wells's first winter concert. Hugely attended. And the kids did a phenomenal job. We've got a band made up of probably 90% of first-year students, which, you know, after three or four months to actually be able to perform in front of a crowd and play together, it was amazing.
Some solo.
It was amazing. We had three or four kids volunteer to try solo or duet. Those were cute. And then our powerful 11-member chorus, you know, and belted out three songs. You would think there were 50 kids up there. They were so amazing. The tiny little guys just, you could hear it word for word. It was really clear. Had nothing to do with the new sound system, it was their voices. So it was great. Mr. Wells got a lot of positive feedback afterwards, which was good for him because, you know, he's never formally taught music before. He's done things on the side and, you know, this was a new experience for him. I thought it was great.
That sounds really fantastic.
Yeah, this was, this was by far the best vibe I've ever...
Yeah, for sure.
That's great.
Yeah. My daughter's never, she's never played an instrument before.
Nope.
Yeah. And they just got right up there. And yeah, this was really, really good. And I went up and said something to Mr. Wells as well. And he was like, geez, I really can tell your daughter practices. I'm like, she does?
That's great. That's really good. That sounds like a...
It was more than their next one. Everybody was very good. And he opened up the chorus to members after the concert. And I believe he's got a half a dozen students who said, I'm in. Because we held a in-school concert the next day. It's important for them to, you know, perform in front of their peers. Raven six us again. He got, you know, half a dozen new students. So hopefully we'll continue to grow and perform for you folks.
That's fantastic and good vibe with Mr. Wells, that sounds like.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Excellent.
A little further down in my report, I wanted to highlight the water testing that's been ongoing since last summer. We are at the point of completion. We have done all of the testing. You know, I kept you sort of up to date as we've gone along. Dick did a great job of, you know, doing it one step at a time instead of sending everything and then having to start over. He'd, you know, go with one faucet, make sure all of that was done, get the sample, it's approved, then move on to the next one. And he's at the point where I believe he's put all the receipts for the materials and the supplies and everything together. If he hasn't sent it on to the environmental services, he's in the process, but we will get up to a 50% financial return from that.
Excellent.
A little bit added bonus to get some money back. What else did I want to find? You brought up the talent show. One of our transition activities for our kids was going to the talent show at North Shore Middle School last year. We were told that it was canceled this year. I didn't get a reason why. I don't know if there just weren't enough entrants or what. But Mr. Verben did say if there were other events that came up, you know, as we moved through the spring that he thought would be appropriate for kids to come over, then he would definitely reach out to us. I told him that we are looking forward to him coming back either late April or early May with a couple of kids like he did last year. He did a nice job of coming and answering questions of sixth graders. And our sixth graders have been compiling questions for a couple of months. So they're going to be ready for it. So he is still interested in doing that. And then we have Step Up Day the last Friday in May. I will go over and do our, you know, half a day following model schedule and having lunch and all of those fun things. And then on the first page, there were a couple of sort of discussion action items that I had needed from the board in February. And I'll just, I'll talk about the wellness committee first because we were starting to form that in the January meeting, I believe. And I reached out to parents and asked for any interest. And I put in my report that I had three parents get back to me expressing interest. And because there were only three, I thought it would be appropriate to invite all of them to be a part of that. But I didn't want to do that on my own. I figured I should, you know, see what the board is. Katie, obviously, is a part of that myself, still Connor. And I didn't have any other staff members step up, but, you know, I can also put it back out to them again and see if somebody else is.
I think having a nurse.
Oh, didn't we also talk about having Janie Mulligan? Janie's also on, right? I know she's not, I know she's not technically staff here, but she is staff.
Yeah, she said that, you know, we needed her to come. She'd be willing to come as well.
And if not, Beth, the food service director would also. She comes to ones in some of those words. So I'm sure she would come here as well if Janet couldn't.
So that would be eight of us with three parents? And I didn't know what size committee. I mean, you're the board rep, so.
The board rep. But I also am understanding that it's really, it's not, it's not a board's committee. It's really your, it's really your committee. It's an administrative committee. So what... committee, so, so what all the board could weigh in if you'd like us to, I don't.
I think if we've got three interested people, bring them along.
Yeah, because they may not all be able to come each time, so at least, we're hopefully guaranteed at least one parent at our meetings. Okay, I'll reach out to those three listed in my report, and let them know tomorrow that, you know, we'd like to welcome them to the committee if they're still interested.
And we did set up a page on the website for wellness, so if there's things that we want to put on there, just let them know.
And then, the second thing was, the playground committee had come forward back in the fall, and letting know about, you know, their initial work and plans, and we said we'd keep coming back, and we'd check in, and also get approval when needed from the board. So, we were at a point where we were able to write a grant to Timberland Corporation, and it was due the day after the February board meeting. So, I did put in for the grant, and what I did was, I started, I said, you know, some of this work is based upon approval from the board and reviewed by our insurance company. We have not heard whether or not we've been selected for the program that they do, it's a volunteer program that they go out twice a year to different entities and do volunteer work for a day. They've also had a devastating incident on their premises, where they were shut down for a week last month, so just prior to the grant being due, they were told that they couldn't be entering the building because of that. So, I have not had communication with them. The next step is they're going to do a site visit, and then after the site visit, they will say whether or not we've been selected.
Do you know, I realize the timing's maybe thrown off, but were they, in the initial stages, did you know what the timing you were looking for, or they were looking for?
Yeah, their volunteer day is in the middle of May, and it's on a school day. So, one of my standing questions for them is, have you done this on a school day, how does that work? You know, because the work is on our playground, does that mean, you know, obviously, we can't have kids out on the playground that day, is there equipment here, you know, will be signs, that type of stuff, so those, I've got questions ready for the representative if we are selected, because that was a concern of mine too, right? Initially, we thought it was on the weekend, but... So, the six items that we were looking to do are listed there, and some of them are fairly basic, there are things that, you know, Dick and his crew have picked away at a little bit here and there, but, you know, because of other priorities, you know, we've got a group willing to come in and volunteer to, you know, hang this out in the dead for us, it would really, at least help spruce up our playground, not do the things that ultimately we would like to do, like replace equipment and, you know, those type of things. And number four would specifically be, only if we are able to secure the material for the fitness trail, the committee's looking at ways to solicit donations for the material that we would need to construct the trail itself.
That trail doesn't significantly cut into the playground space, does it? It's going to be around the edges, around the outside, is that?
Yeah, there were pieces, the one thing that we didn't think of initially were, you know, the trees don't just grow above ground, they grow below ground, and the most important part's below ground. So, my initial thought was, we've got a fence line, we can go right along the fence line, but there's spots where there's not enough room width-wise, so we had to come out, but we couldn't come out just beyond the tree, because then we'd be cutting down into the roots. But, we felt like we were far enough away, we were behind the soccer field, so the goals weren't interfered with, along the fence lines, so the softball fields aren't interfered with, so if those things come back in the future, it would compromise gameplay or practices. And then, over on the playground, we went down into that little area that's fenced in, and then up behind the equipment, so it wouldn't interfere with any of the current equipment. And if we replace any of that equipment in the future, you know, we can even move it out a little bit further.
And is the entire area fenced, that the trail would run beside?
Yes. Yep. We envision it starting on this side, over near this fence, going out and around the fence line, and ending behind the baseball fence, and then, you know, with signage sort of directing people back, we didn't feel like cutting through the field and the swing sets and all that would be appropriate, so.
Seems wise.
Yeah, people can do laps, just come down the hill and across the driveway and start again, and do certain things. If they do one circuit, then they're getting ten exercises, if they do two, they get twenty exercises. And the length of it was just under two tenths of a mile, so not quite a quarter of the track, but the rest of the items are, you know, basically, they're just sprucing the area out, then prepping it for other work, but moving one of the softball fences, so that the trail can go behind it, there wasn't enough room. But the gentleman that came up to look at it said, you know, it's easy enough, there's just one fence, you pull it around, it swings it over, and put it back in.
And I know, and I know the board did ask to be kept informed and to approve of sort of those changes that we're going to have to make. Any questions from the board, or thoughts?
Sounds great, seems like it's a little bit up in the air, but we'll move forward.
Yeah, so I, so I would say that's probably by consensus. Hope it moves forward, and you are planning on doing it this year? If, I mean, that's the hope you just don't know.
Yeah, because of what's going on with them, and, you know, some places are shut down now.
Right, and may just be, and, yeah, we don't know, I know that, I know that they do it on a workday, so, for them, so.
Yeah, yeah, so ideally, it would be this spring, if they're selecting us, number one, and then the availability, and making sure that, you know, everything passes through our own insurance. But I'll keep you up to date, and let you know as we progress, and if not, we'll postpone it, and fundraise.
Anyway, so by consensus, the board says, you know, keep going, and we hope it all works out.
Great.
Rich, do you need any formal motion for the grant, or is this acceptable?
Yeah, it's not really a grant, it's a service project that they do.
So, this is just, this is not just a?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
You mean in terms of like, accepting a donation kind of thing, the kind of thing we might have to do, yeah?
Yeah, there's no money that they're giving us, it's just the.
Okay, so it's just, just board approvals?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. And I, I just wanted to ask about all ten students on the, on the invention convention going forward to, going forward to the UNH. Is that unusual, they have all of the students selected, or does that happen?
It's been different each year, and there was a little confusion this year. We've had years where there were significantly more kids in our school convention, and we couldn't send all of them to represent the school. But typically, when there's the best kids, in the past, they have sent all. So, this year, initially, some of the judges were basing their scores on prior years, and we initially selected half the students, and other judges were saying, you know, all the kids are going, there's some missing information, so.
But anyway, they're all?
Yeah, they're invited to go, it's up to the families whether they take them or not.
Well, if, if it, if it needed to get help, they're right, Mark, right?
It's at Southern Hampshire University, so I haven't heard what they have to or not, I know they're going online.
I'm seeing nods to the negative in the back, but we'll see, anyway, you'll hear officially about a time. All right, thank you. Any other questions on his, on his update? Thank you, Rich. We have the high school rep here from Marshwood, Nick Garapie. Nick, you're on. Nick, have you met our new board member, Michael Gwale?
I have not.
Nick Garapie, Nick's a senior, so don't get a chance to. He'll be leaving us very soon.
So, I think probably best to start with sports, because everything else kind of transitions into itself. So, winter sports season has basically come to a close. Boys' basketball lost in the quarterfinals to Palmen in the playoffs. The girls did win a state championship, they beat Hampton Academy forty-two, thirty-two, and it was their first title in twenty-five years.
Ooh, did we have some?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Angelina Besson.
We have like, six.
Six rounds with them?
Six rounds.
Yeah. Angelina, Angelina was like, the second highest scorer in the game, so she was a big part of that win.
Right, I'm glad we could do our part.
And then, hockey is kind of a weird situation. They take the top twelve teams for playoffs, but there's only thirteen teams in the league.
Uh-oh.
So, they only won two games, but they still were in twelfth, so they got to the playoffs, but they lost in the first round.
So, they made the playoffs?
Yeah. They kind of say they made the playoffs, but they, they didn't really go that far. So, also, February break happened since the last time we met, and one of the two trips that happened was the trip to Tanzania. Seven girls from the high school in all grades went on a service learning trip there, where they, it was, it was coordinated with the EF Educational Tours and the Me Too Charity, and they helped gather water, and they dug the foundations for one of the homes there, and they just got to spend a lot of time playing with all the kids, because that was a really cool opportunity for them. And additionally, there was a trip you may have heard of, to Italy. That, they, they got out of there in the nick of time. It was, I believe, a day or two before, everything kind of blew up there, so they, they made it out, and it looked like a really fun trip, and they just were really there as like, sites here, and forests, not really doing anything big, but just for the experience.
And that, and that group has all remained healthy?
Yes, so that kind of gets me into the next topic, which is the COVID-19 coronavirus stuff. So, most of it, just the same stuff that superintendent said, just like, a lot of extra precautions being taken, along with the cleaning every night, there's also deep cleanings happening on the weekends. And there are being plans put in place for out-of-school learning, which, we don't know exactly how that's going to work yet, but it looks like it's going to be through Google Classroom, with either live streams, or just like posting notes or learning material online, to be able to, I guess, continue the best we can with our education, and those days at home will be kind of as school, as school days. And the district is really just following the guidance of the CDC, in the main CDC, so it's going to be completely up to the district. But, if the CDC says that it's probably a good idea to close the school, then we will. And today was the first day that there was a confirmed case in me, so, like, again, day-to-day thing, hour-to-hour thing, no idea what's going to happen, but steps are being made to just make sure that we're prepared, so. Yes. So, then, coming up, for the rest of this month, if, if this stuff happens, tomorrow, there is the yearly dodgeball tournament held by the interact club at the high school. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, I think there's seventeen teams this year, teams of six, and just like a basic double elimination bracket. You get prizes for the best named team, and the best costume design team, I guess, and all the proceeds from the tournament go to the Australian Wildfires, so it's partially a lot of fun, partially for a good cause.
Is that high school, or middle school and high school?
Just high school, yeah. On April first is the junior planning day at the high school, so this is just basically a big class meeting for the juniors in auditorium, where there's a slideshow, where the guidance counselors go through a bunch of different options for kids in their upcoming years, whether it's college, or a job, or the military, or whatnot. And there's also speakers, so they have a couple of teachers come in and talk about their experiences, they have some people in the military come in, they have people who just went right to work out of high school, and then they also have a couple of students. So, this year, I'm one of the speakers, as someone who is going into athletics in college, there's also someone going to community college, some taking a gap year, so they have a bunch of different options for, just giving the kids basically a big range of options, and just kind of preparing for the, for their senior year, so they kind of know what direction they want to go. The day after that is the science augmentation testing, which is, I guess, just like a main testing thing, where they can, they get information about the academic progress of the students and the school in general, so it's kind of just like a generic standardized test that will give the state an idea of how Marshwood's doing in regards to science.
Is every grade in the high school tested, or is it just certain grades that are tested, or, you know, just, just yours?
I believe it's sophomores and juniors, but I could be wrong about that, I don't know for sure.
Meaning, you're not, you're not cramming, the test is what you're telling me?
I'm not, seniors are not quite that.
Okay.
And the last thing I have is, the day after that, April third, is the end of the third quarter.
Busy times.
Yes, so, any questions about COVID-19, or in general?
Well done, Nick, thank you for the, all the updates. We know our days are dwindling with you, so we're happy to see you every time that we do, and hopefully we'll see you in April. Stay healthy.
I'll do my best.
And, you know, you could stay, but also you're free to leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the financial update.
Have you attached, included in your packet? I mentioned in my last update, we didn't have, but we had a couple of students who attend Marshwood Middle and High School. They do have significant special education needs, so I've encumbered their services for the rest of the year, it was about sixty thousand dollars. However, we had savings going into this year for students, you know, regular tuition, so we're still okay. We did also receive our first invoice, well, yeah, the first half of the year from Dover Career Tech Center, because we pay for our loans for students who go there, that was about twelve thousand dollars, so. I did reach out to them, though, they did have one student on there who had moved to South Berwick, so I asked them to please remove that student, because it was no longer Rollins' responsibility, so, but that twelve thousand is taking that person off, so, that's encumbered in this update as well. And then the revenue's attached too, but there really was no significant changes.
No, it's just not, no changes.
It's pretty.
We rarely get that unexpected revenue. So, questions from the board, thoughts, questions from the board on?
I also have your forms to fill out for your stipends, so I think that you guys can fill them out, and I'll come back to you.
I mean, certainly overall, the overall picture looks good. There are a few things that still are not yet encumbered, I assume that'll come out, like for instance, the board services, I mean, those will, as soon as we fill out our stipends, that will be encumbered and come down. So, any thoughts or questions from the board to answer? So, it looks like we're in good shape, and thank you, thank you very much for keeping us up to date on all that, and for, you know, you and Nancy are keeping an eye on the special stuff that goes around. That's a bit of work. All right, so, that's the budget update, so just sort of, just have a quick review of the deliberative session. It seems like a long time ago now. It was, it was a long time ago now, and I think we, I keep saying, why are we still seeing the deliberative presentation in our, in our packet? It's because.
I actually said to Alice, why is that still on there?
And I said, oh yes, we haven't discussed it yet. I think, in general, I think we're all disappointed in the numbers of people that show up, we're very happy that the people who do show up do, but it's a very small group of people. But, I thought the presentation went very well, and certainly appreciate Dr. Kramsky and stepping in, and doing most of the presentation, along with some of the board members, so. Any other?
I think, yeah, I thought it went really well. The presentation is clear and easy to understand, and I know that the people who are there really appreciate that, so thank you.
Every year, it gets a little bit better.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's good. And we take the feedback, you know, come on.
And we take the feedback, you know, the oral meetings too, things that are coming up. And it's really just being able, you know, hands is, you know, it's communicating things and easy to understand. And if they do have questions, they're.
Yeah, it does, yeah, that's why it's, it helps to have those concise sort of presentations of each, of each warrant article and be able to answer it that way, yeah. So, thank you. Quick discussion, anyway. A very positive, very, very positive review on all of that. For all of.
Very positive out town.
Is there something we should be paying?
Candidate sign up town hall.
Yeah, we're just going to discuss how, it's the first time it was at the town hall.
Oh.
That, that's why we're going to discuss that when we get there. All right, so now on your new business, um, the snow day discussion, this has to do with the number of snows. No, no school days. They weren't all, all snow days. One was an electrical outage day that happened just on Rollinsford because it was only, just this part of Rollinsford. The rest of us were fine. So Gail, you're happy to join us in this, in this, um, discussion, but will it, um, Dr. Gudonski kick it off?
Yeah, just an update. At, at this point, the, the, with the no school days that we had, we're looking at June 25th is the, the last day of school right now. That's a Thursday, so, you know, if we should happen to get a late March, was it? We still have.
It happens, but yeah.
We still have one more day before we kick into the final day. That just, that, we did have some, you know, I put March 20 down there, that's a professional development day. If, if we decided to, we could use that as a student day and, and back up one day. But, you know, that would simply put us to the 24th of, of June, which is a Wednesday. So, um, I guess my recommendation at this point is, is leave it where it is and, you know, like I said, we've got one more day to stay in that same week if we, if we absolutely need to.
Any thoughts about changing the length of the school day to maybe make up some time?
Yeah, I mean, Rich and I have talked about a number of different things and, and it's a possibility, you could do that. You have to be careful with your buses because you, you, your bus routes are such that, you know, there's only so much flexibility in, in how you can move that day around. I, I'm also, I, I've done that in other districts because of the, you know, the number of days in that particular year with the snow. I mean, I'm always sensitive of, I, I don't want it to be lost time either. You know, some districts add 10 or 15 minutes over a period of time and it turns into lost, wasted time. So, you know, we've got to be careful with that as well. If we were, if we were, you know, bumping into that last few days of June into a new week, I, I would be concerned about that. But, you know, it is late. It's later than usual. But, you know, it's not out of the ordinary, you know, kind of used like that.
Gail, do you want to join in here or?
Yeah, I'd love to. I, I just have, just, it's not color point of interest, but just something we put down on paper. This is, um, this is not new, this is, uh, probably, two years ago, we had, um, actually like eight days to make up. And, um, so the, the figures look a lot like our previous admin had kind of figured out.
I don't know who you are.
I'm Tasha.
Oh, Tasha, thanks to meet you. Rich, do you want to look at this too? It's very much like what it's like.
Uh, no, that's, that's different because, because originally we had thought about, again, canceling that March 20th day, but since it's next week, it's not fair to families. We didn't think to, to swap that day for the end of, um, June. But, um, still possibly looking at, just shortening, looking at our Marshwood siblings who, um, could be ending like the 12th, actually. Rumor has, I mean, theirs would bounce into, say, one more day or a half a day they would have to do. But I'm hearing rumors that they might eliminate their Thursday delayed starts, like they've done in the past, to end on the 12th still, June 12th. That's, we have a lot of siblings, um, and families that, you know, going until the 25th is a lot longer. So I got a whole, uh, stream of emails, um, just asking, um, association members, nothing. What, just what are their thoughts, that's all. Not a single one said, yes, let's go till the 25th. Or yay, yay, maybe we'll have another snow day even. They had worked most, except for, I think, two had worked, um, before. And we actually had 45 minutes to the day. And swapped out some PD days. So their thoughts were, you know, not stressing to end on the 17th, that's the original day, that's not really reality, but maybe going till, till that Friday. So it would be a week longer than our siblings at Marshwood. And consider swapping out our May PD day, working it out at the end. The teachers would come back on June 22nd, which is a Monday, but have the kids still be done on that Friday. I know we have kindergarten work, uh, like open house that day, and I, that happened two years ago as well.
It was last year.
On the PD day. Well, it also happened, I believe, two years ago when we rescheduled the PD day. And I'm pretty sure the kindergarten aide and possibly substitutes man kept the kids in class. They canceled their day. It was a, it was a student day instead. But that still would leave, um, three days. If we make up two in June, the 18th and 19th, um, it still leaves three, like, you know, snow days. Just calculating out how many hours, that's, that's 18 hours, 18.6 hours. Rather than pushing the 45 minutes a day, we know the buses could come 15 minutes earlier because they, they did that before. We did 15 minutes early in the morning and a half an hour in the afternoon. And that's brutal, actually, staying, the kids would be here till 3:30, staff getting to 3:45. The pairs, um, pretty much got dipped and it was not done correctly. But if we could do 30 minutes, um, over 38 days, that gives you 19 hours, that would more than cover in that time. Starting, just a suggestion, starting on April 28th, which is, gives us one day to come back after April vacation to June 19th, would be that Friday. Most of the professional staff prefer a morning start if possible. I'm not sure the bus could get us here for the half an hour in the morning. Kids are fresh, this, this is actually ready to go in the mornings. And this building gets unhealthy hot, it's like a, oh, and especially the old building. To be here that late in the day, that late in the summer, it's, um, it's really uncomfortable. And this is the nature's classroom year again, a lot of fifth and sixth graders checking out, checking out after nature's classroom, which is the last week in May, right before the June. So just, just a couple of time suggestions, if we could do 15 and 15, before school, after school. We really appreciate just looking at that, um, to, to not have to be here quite so late.
Well, yeah, certainly, looking at going to the 25th is certainly, it's going, that's certainly going late. It's been an unusual year. One of the things that concerns me is though, is doing this scramble at, at this time of year. And I would really like us as a board, as more as an administration, to look at how we can, going forward, maybe not this year, but certainly going forward, look at how we can maybe rearrange things rather than have to scramble to do it.
That came up in our email, like the trail is definitely, could we just add 15 minutes every day at some point and kind of assume that, well, that would maybe be equivalent of, uh, four snow days. And if we had four snow days, then that's taken care of. If we only had two, well, we work 15 minutes extra day, it was just, it's kind of a risk thing, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so that, I would be more in favor, you know, of, of thinking along those lines of looking at making a permanent change, uh, rather than having to do this ad hoc. Because it's just, because it throws everybody up in the air, even having to give up a PD day. I mean, it means, uh, we would probably have people lined up for it to come in and we'd have to cancel them and all that kind of stuff. And the, and the bus company, while, while they did do it then, they've done it for us, I know they have. I mean, I, I don't think we can assume that they will do it again at no charge. I, I just, I just don't think we can assume that. Anyway, uh, other thoughts from the, from the board or, or administration?
Yeah, to look through this, it just seems, you know. I mean, just from my own opinion, I don't really know what you get out of an extra 15 minutes.
Well, we don't know the buses can do that in the morning, in the morning either. So I mean, that's the, the part that makes it difficult is to make it work, I think it has to be something that would. I'd rather see it be something we do something permanently. I'd rather look forward to some sort of a, with, it does get very hot in, in this brick building. And for us to find a way to be ending school earlier is better anyway, I think, for us as a, as a school.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea to look at different options and, and build your calendar appropriately looking into that because this, quite frankly, shouldn't be a surprise because your, your end date was on a Wednesday, the 17th. So it only gives you two days. I mean, typically in a normal winter, you're going to have one or two days for, for snow days or, or other things that happen. It's rare that you have, like last year, I think we had one or.
Yeah, last year we had, yeah, we had one.
That's rare. So, you know, it, when you're building the calendar, it, for the following year, I mean, you're already, you, you started to end your year at the 17th, so you knew you were going to bump into that last week. I mean, it's just, so I, I like the idea of kind of looking ahead. And if it's building, like you said, building it in at the beginning of the year and then adjusting at the end if we don't need it, I mean, that, that makes some sense. Or look at, look at shortening some of your, uh, either Christmas break or picking up a day in, in, in August or two there. You know, every day or two you pick up during the year just helps out at the end.
And certainly, it's not, it's not my place to say it, it would be up to the professionals to decide. But, you know, the PD day, if you made it a, a student day and the teacher, it would be just staff, that extra day without students is what you were saying, right?
Correct.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I would leave that up to the educators to decide, um, on, on cutting it back that one day if they felt it was really just wise.
Yeah, with, with the, with the coronavirus, the way it is, I mean, we, we're unknown for the next month or so, so. I mean, who knows how that's going to play out either, whether we're going to need to revisit this or, or not, but.
There may be no school anywhere by the time we're done yet.
But I would, I would agree strongly that, that, you know, look at those things when you're setting your calendar because if you're, if you're ending your school year on the 17th, which is a Wednesday, you know you're going into the next week almost all the time.
Well, I think, um, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to think that it's worth looking into seeing if we can make something like this happen for this year and also planning maybe better for contingencies next year. I mean, half an hour maybe isn't a ton of time, but also, as, um, as Gail pointed out, when students are getting into the last couple of weeks of June, they're checked out anyway. And it's so hot. And the, um, your point about the Marshwood siblings is well taken. They already go so much less, it seems. And to have them, you know, that far off really cuts into families' vacation time and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, uh, maybe it's not possible, but I think it's worth looking into. That's my thought on the, on the topic.
All right, and so, and it, it, it probably doesn't hurt to look into it, but we're talking now maybe half, half hour in the morning, right? And that would be a discussion with the bus company mostly, right?
If, if the board goes in that direction and would like, I will call the bus company. I'll look into, you know, what time adjustments we can do. And then I suppose that would mean a decision at, at the, your April meeting as to what that might look like.
Yeah, which makes it very late to, well, it gives us time, maybe, gives a week or so to, before vacation to get it ready and. Well, I think it's worth getting the information. Let's, let's get, so it, it sounds like the board. That was just what I, what I think, Tom nodded. You guys think? Mike, any thoughts?
I definitely think, I think it's worth looking into. Thirty days early, or 30 minutes early to start, I think it's reasonable. It's just, if you went to a school board meeting on the 9th of April, though, to start on the 28th of April, you're only giving parents two weeks' notice to.
Yeah, what do you, what do you think now?
That, that's tough, you know, I mean, some families sure they'll be able to do it easy, but then there's a family who adjusts their schedule with multiple siblings.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Difficult.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we could get the answer soon or later, I don't know how we could make it to the board meetings.
Well, we can, we could call a special meeting if we needed to, to make a decision on this, once we get the information. And, I mean, this is all, in some ways, hypothetical and, and we just really don't know what's going to happen over the next, yeah. Things are changing so rapidly with the.
Especially if we have another weather event.
Well, no, the weather ban, or COVID-19, I mean, any of these things are. Yeah, we have had late March storms. But let's, let's, um, let's find out if the bus company could accommodate it because I, I, I don't know how tight they are between the Marshwood runs and, and getting, and, you know, let's just see if it's even possible.
Even 15, even splitting it 15 and 15, um.
I can certainly.
A consideration.
So ideally, ha, 30 minutes in the morning, but.
I think that, that seemed to be the, the preferred time for, just because of the kids' energy and the temperature of the building.
And those of you with young, with young children, how, how, how easy will it be to get your six-year-old down at half an hour?
My son's normally sitting there and worrying, asking him, he's kind of. He'd be fine.
Well, that, well, so let's, so let's at least get the information.
Okay.
And see if they would do it at, at, you know, without having to put on extra buses because I'm, I'm, I almost think they ran extra buses for us, but, well, last time we did it, but I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure.
Okay, I'll find out.
So let's at least, let's at least find that out. And, and, I'm sorry, Gail.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and I think more importantly, as we go forward, I know we set the next year's calendar like over the summer, I think. All right, pretty much August, September.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Yeah, we set, or the end, before the end of this year, next year's calendar gets set. And I think that, so, so maybe more importantly, find out from the bus company what could happen. Well, both, you know, possibly this year, we'll really concentrate on next year, on, on a 30-minute early start. That is what I'm hearing from, yeah. No, I'm just saying that, that the question's going to be twofold. What about this year bus company, but also really seriously next year for like a 30-minute early start, right? I mean, that's something the union would agree to and. Well, you don't know. Well, we'll find out. Let's get the, let's get the information. We'll cross that bridge when we get there. I mean, I, I know, I know year after year, um, I know that year after year, the educators have all been asked for, for, for just more instruction time. And, and I think more instruction time in one day is a better way to do it, rather than stretch out into the, into the summer. So if that can work.
I wish you weren't here to say that. Absolutely.
I mean, I've, I've heard it loud and clear for a number of years, as, as anyone who has sat on the board has heard it. Yeah, so, and I think, so if there's a way we can do that, it'd be great to build it into the calendar and then perhaps not have to go so late. So we'll get that information and, and if, if it looks like something that can work, we'll, we'll, um, let you know and get together again, perhaps to, to talk about it. Thank you very much, Bob, and thank you for your input on that. So very quickly, the next thing on the new business was the candidate sign up at town hall. So for, so I think for the first time, it was at town hall rather than at the SAU office. And I heard from a number of people who signed up that they loved it. So you had to sign up, Darren, what did you think?
It was, it was easy. Took five minutes.
Because you've done both.
No, I was a write-in. Back in the day. When only, when nobody ran.
Back in the day.
When nobody ran.
How about, how about you, Mike? You signed up?
I thought it was really easy. At the end of the process, I said, is that it? Really? That's all I had to do? So, I haven't done it any other way, but it taught me a very.
Yeah, the, the difference is that you didn't have to travel to the SAU office. And, you know, the difference is that you didn't have to travel to the SAU office in Somersworth. And so, and I know that the moderator and the clerk were very pleased.
And I have to say, it was fine for me. They gave me the information back to me, so I was wishing for me to...
So, I think we'll plan to continue that way. I mean, I don't, just letting you know in essence. I know it takes a little bit of communication, but...
Yeah, but we communicate, he and I communicate, so there's really no impact for me, so.
Excellent, any other thoughts on that? All right, the facility update. Now, I don't, is there a general facility update? I know Tom had some things you wanted to address, and is there a general facilities update as well?
No, I just put a couple of things in my report, general information for you folks, but...
Tom, I know you wanted to talk about a few things.
Yeah, I had an opportunity sometime, I think in 2020, maybe it was January, to take a stroll up to the attic. I went up there, Dick gave me a tour of the, you know, what that looks like. More, I was thinking the lines of the storage area that we had talked about before. Budgets, excuse me. So, I got an opportunity to go up there for the first time since 10 years on this board. I'd never been up there before. Good grief, there's a lot of crap up there.
And it's been cleaned out, yes.
Yeah, well, here's the thing, and Dick explained this to me, you know, he was very diplomatic. But the thing is, we have the ventilation system. Folks are going to need to get up there to figure out how that's all going to look and where it's all going to go, all that, you know, all that ductwork. But unfortunately, there is so much stuff up there. There's stuff up there I'm sure hasn't been moved in a decade, maybe longer. There are flags like those, piles of them. There's a picture of George Washington in an old frame. This thing has to be the original picture. The glass is all gone, but the picture is like a hundred years old. But in all seriousness, there's a lot of stuff up there that, student records, individual teachers, I'm sure you guys know you have like certain spots, and textbooks, I'm looking up, you know, opening them up, and there is a picture of the current leader of Russia, Mr. Khrushchev. You know what I'm saying? It's just a lot of stuff up there that is never, ever going to see daylight in a classroom. So, I asked it, you know, what did he think, what's the plan? And he was honest, there, first of all, it's really dangerous to go up there because the plywood that is, it's kind of rickety, that is over the, that basically is the floor. But the other thing is that the ventilation system, they're going to need to go up there to figure out how that's going to look, and then they're going to eventually have, you know, there's going to be installation. But all of this stuff is in the way. And I haven't even mentioned the stuff that has to do with plays from days gone by. It's unreal. My concern, though, is that a lot of the stuff, even with the, from the plays that was done, you know, that were done in the past, will never, ever be used again. And it, the stuff, it, when you have pieces of, you know, things that are covered in paper, there's just moisture up there, it stinks. So, what's the plan, you know? If the stuff is going to get used again, then it definitely needs to be stored. And it needs to be stored where it's safe for people to actually get to it, but also to keep it from, you know, deteriorating over time because it's just up in this attic. It's cold, it's damp.
So, Tom, are we, are we...
Well, I'm getting...
Are we getting to your point that you can have, okay?
So, it's Tupac. The first thing is, we absolutely need a, another storage compartment. I also had a chance to go out where I'm at. Yeah, it's right out there. Tons of fans that are no longer going to be used. There are a lot of other teacher materials out there, bins. The hard part about this is, it just can't be one person that does it.
It does what?
Moves all this stuff down. There's just so much stuff. So, I asked Dick, okay, how, you know, what do you think would be reasonable? And I had some suggestions. He's not, you know, against bringing all the stuff down and having everybody go through their stuff, the teachers, ours, going through all the stuff to figure out, okay, this is definitely going to be saved, this can go. Because some of the stuff really is trash. And I understand why you don't have everybody running up into the attic because it's not, it's not safe. But the other thing is, the stuff that is kept, where is it going to go? And that's where that other storage piece comes in. I had suggested, or at least I'm suggesting now, that perhaps when the warmer weather comes, that perhaps maybe a portion of a teacher's workshop day can be used to maybe just go through some of this stuff.
Well, let's, let's bring it down to maybe something that the board would have some control over because we took the storage shed off, out of the budget for this coming year. We took the storage shed off for a number of reasons. Partly, we knew we were going to clear up the fan space because we're going to put overhead fans in every classroom that need them. And partly because no one wants to encourage more storage. But if there's, if there's, if there's a logical reason, some logical source that was created so that everyone would know how much storage would be available and then clear out the attic, and anyway, they choose to do it and go through things. And, but they have a, anyway, I think we should talk about, what we can talk about, which would be whether or not we would need a storage shed, how big it would be, how much space it would take up, those kinds of things and...
Well, my thought is that the stuff up in the attic can't stay there. It just can't.
Right, so that's why we should be talking about a storage area.
But you are, you do have, you have student records that I'm sure have to be kept for a certain number of years, I'm assuming. That's an assumption, there are student records up there. I didn't find any of mine, but I didn't go to this school.
I think to start with, if the, if the board is directing us to start with just simply cleaning out, you know, cleaning out this with the fans, if we're no longer going to be using them, we can dispose of them or sell them or whatever we need to do with those. And cleaning out the attic of the stuff that we know that we can get rid of. And then we'll have a better idea of, I mean, there are going to be some questionable stuff that we're going to need the teachers to take a look at, and is this valuable? Do we need to keep it? But like you said, I think there's things up there that we can clean some of it out, just clean it out.
But I saw that, you know, each, you know, teacher has their own section. So, I'm assuming that everybody's going to want to go through all their own stuff.
Well, I think it's going to have to be done in stages because this is not a one-day step.
No, this is not, this is not a one-day thing at all.
Yeah, but I think bringing it down to that, because, because one of the reasons we took the storage shed off is that until we knew what we really needed for storage space, what I don't want to see is any area, is a dummy storage shed is dotted all over the place. It needs to be more...
Like a, like a whole storage unit?
Yes, like we'd be renting out, yeah. I'd much rather see it be much more, you know, compact, as compact as it can be. And let's face it, the space you have gets filled. It's a long nature, I believe. So, I like that we've had this discussion, and I think that it would be, I think, with Tom's sort of push on this, I think, I would certainly agree with, to what the rest of the board feels of directing the administration to, we know fans are going, the overhead fans are going in, that yes, clean out the stuff we know we're not going to need, or wait until the overhead fans go in to get rid of them, so we know what space we have there. Things, somebody to go through up there to say, well, do we really need to keep student, handwritten student records from 1946? I don't know, I don't know how far back they go. And I know there are globes and old books and things like that up there, which...
Collectors items.
Yeah, positive collector's items, but don't necessarily need to remain out in the school. So, what about Mike and Aaron, how do you feel about that?
When is this ventilation project?
It has not, we, right, for this coming year, it is a, it's going to be planned.
They have to go up there basically.
But essentially, the ventilation in this building really needs updating. If there's, let's just say, it needs ventilation, there really isn't ventilation.
I only ask just to think of a timeline, you know, how much time do we actually have?
It's the plans that they're coming up with, that we budgeted for.
So, we would have at least a year. I would think we have at least a year.
Not something that needs to be done tomorrow or today.
Right, yeah, that's a good, good...
But keep in mind that we are going to continue to move stuff up there. Like, we're going to have the play next month. After that's all done, the stuff is going to end up going up those stairs.
And they aren't really stairs, Mike? It's really, it's a, they're not really stairs.
It's a mobile stair.
It is. It's like when you're going to the top shelf in Home Depot, and they roll those woodrow metals. It's like that, yeah.
It's not like a loft in an attic.
It's actually dangerous, I'm surprised.
I went there, I was like, wow, yeah, this is something else.
So, let's, Tom, does that make sense to start with that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Get that going and, okay, is there anything else that you wanted to?
No, I did have a chance, though, to, again, I went into this unit as well to see what that was looking like, and it gets very, very packed, a lot of stuff. So, the reason I say that is because I don't know if there is a lot of, there's not a lot of room to move in there, you know, to use that. I mean, you're going to have some opportunity, but not a tremendous amount.
And is there room back there to put more storage in that same area?
Where you need here?
Yeah. I mean, I guess they want to build more storage everywhere.
Yeah, but I mean, you would have more of a, almost like one of those, I don't know, trellery-type things, you could, that size.
Oh, I see.
But there's, yeah, it's really going to depend on what's left.
Okay, so let's get, so let's get started on the process. Let's get that started, all right. And thank you for that, that's good, that's good to know. The next discussion, I, yes.
Sorry, one thing, one other thing under facilities. I guess just to get a opinion of the board. We had talked last year, I believe, about the safety and security of the front entrance and the back entrance.
Thank you, yes.
And we got some estimates on reconfiguring the back, that was rather costly and ultimately too costly to get it done. Rich and I have talked a number of times about the front, and if there's anything kind of lower cost that we could do right by the main office as well as the nurses' office and door there. And I guess I'm just asking the board, would you like us to see if we can get some tentative figures on perhaps a door coming across by the nurses' office that would secure that, a secure door for the office, maybe a talk-through, and maybe even taking another exit from the office through where the copy machine is and out that wall there? It may be a manageable cost, we haven't gotten estimates yet, but if the board would like, we can explore that a little further.
Absolutely. It's one of the concerns we heard recently from the union presidents that it's something that, it would be really nice to be able to have this building be a little bit more secure. And certainly, if it was something, if it could be done in the existing space, then it's absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some ideas, but neither one of us is an architect.
Right, and I was, I was just going to caution you, I do the same thing. I was going to caution you, I was going to caution you because I recognize it, not to present a solution to someone, but to say, here's the space. Here are some things we, you know, we've been thinking of, what's the best way to do it? Believe me, I'd be happy to, you know, might draw our own for it too, but no. Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be a very good thing to do.
Okay, we'll try to go forward with that and get some ideas to bring back to the board.
In the past, too, there was some money available from Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, yeah.
Yeah, is that...
No, Homeland Security specifically. But we would have to check on that.
We don't have to check on...
I don't know of any money presently. I know there was in the last two to four years that came through.
The police chief often knows about Homeland Security. He's the one who knew about the camera on Monday, for instance, why we did the cameras.
We can certainly check into it and find out.
That'd be great. Just, it's worth checking, but also, I mean, this would be a good time to find out now so that it could be done as soon as possible.
Sure.
Thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. The next new business piece is the school board retreat. I just wanted to get it on everybody's radar that we usually hold a retreat each year. I was looking at Mike because he doesn't know we do this each year. And we usually do it on an evening, from like 5 to 8. Where it's convenient for everyone, we've done it at the SAU office in the past. It's just the board, the principal, the superintendent. And we get together and we set our goals for the coming year. And we use those goals, they're on the back of our agenda. We use those goals to guide us for what we want to do and get accomplished during that year. And we also use those goals to sort of measure how the superintendent's doing. It's his job to help us meet those goals, so we do that as well. So, just letting you know, so certainly by our April meeting, if people could come with dates and stuff. I can't remember when we've done it in the past. I think we do it pretty much toward the end of the school year or, I think it was in June last year. June, yeah. Just get it on people's radar, that was just a mention for that, thank you. And while we're talking about facilities, one of the joys of meeting the public on Tuesday is that you learn about different things that are going on. So, we understand that the school is in desperate need of nets on the soccer goal.
We may have some nets we've been waiting, so to get into the shed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we need to find out if our current nets are still usable.
Okay.
And if they are, we have nets, we just need to get them out there in the spring for the kids. And if we don't, then it's figuring out how we can get some.
And if you don't, I believe we, I believe we have, we might have enough money in one of our lines to say, please go ahead and do that. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
I've been on top of that for a few months.
I'm sure you have, thank you very much.
I also had some questions about the water fountain in the gym.
If you go into the gym now, it's in the process of being looked at. It's not an easy fix from what Dick has told me. He had a plunger going on yesterday. Yeah, it's something that's been like, he's put it off because of other priorities, you know, the whole other waters, it's simply his priority because, you know, we have other places that kids can go to. But he is working on that, and it's driving me crazy. He'd walk away sometimes.
Thank you, Rich, it's the joys of meeting the public. Sometimes it's the only chance people get to talk to a board member, so...
Our last retreat was July 15th.
Oh, thank you, July 15th, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, all right, so we'll talk about that as time goes on. Thank you, all right. So, old business now, we're going to talk about the non-resident tuition discussion. Bob has shared with us that we do have a tuition, non-resident tuition policy that we've had. And it is our goal this evening to actually set a tuition rate, I believe.
Yes.
Would you like to fill us in on that?
Sure, you've had a policy here. We've had requests in the past of people that might want a tuition, their kids, into Rawlinsford School. Right now, just to give you kind of a point of reference, the tuition at Marshwood is 11.4...
11.7, oh, it'll be 11.7 this year.
11.7. And if you look at our per pupil that's registered through the Department of Ed for Rawlinsford, it's about 19.9. So, you know, it kind of gives you a little bit, if somebody is tuitioned, they would... So, you know, it kind of gives you a little bit, if somebody is tuitioned in, they would be responsible for transportation, so you've got to take that into consideration as well, so.
And special education too, right?
Special education, so, you know, you've got to, kind of, you do some guidelines on what you might want to consider.
So, in some of our earlier discussion, we, it was made clear, I think we had the discussion, but special education would be paid for from the school district the child should be attending. So that would not be anything that, so we would be reimbursed for special education costs, should there be any, with any student that's tuitioned in. And transportation would not be, we would not provide transportation for anyone tuitioning in. So those are two things that would bring down the cost. At the moment, we have space, we wouldn't want to tuition in 20 students. At the moment, we have one request, I believe. Bob has made clear, and certainly I agree, and I think the educators would agree, that if we take a, if we tuition a student in, we would have to sort of believe that we will have them throughout their grade school experience. We can't just say, "Well, we'll decide next year on next year." We couldn't do that, we'd have to keep them, you know, we'd have to plan to keep them So what other things do we need to be thinking about?
Well, then again, this is simply to set a number.
To set it.
And then you would have the ability to look at each case individually and then decide whether, you know, that situation fits. Class size, you know, the grade, how many teachers, all nine yards, so. This exercise really is to establish a number.
And, you know, certainly, this is, in a way, this is revenue, this would be revenue. I think I would be comfortable probably anywhere between thirteen and fifteen.
That would be fourteen.
Thank you, Tom. Or even a little lower. I mean, I just, it's hard to know.
Actually, it's funny you say fourteen, that's what I was thinking.
Was it thinking, you're thinking fourteen? I mean, in a way, we're taking a stab, I mean, do you have any other?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, in my mind, you wouldn't want to go below the Marshwood because that's what you're paying for your high school kids. But at the same time, I think that there are some benefits that residents get with the amount of per pupil cost that somebody tuitioning in from the outside is not going to get. So I think it's reasonable to be lower than that. If you were to set it at fourteen or fifteen thousand, you wouldn't have to revisit it for a while. So, I mean, if you were, if you were going lower than that and Marshwood were to, you know, continue to rise, then you'd have to revisit it. But if it's at fourteen or fifteen, I would think that that would, you know, be able to be pretty stable for a few years anyway.
Yes, and it wouldn't be, we wouldn't guarantee to somebody, while we would want to plan to keep them, we wouldn't guarantee that the tuition would stay the same every year, if something should happen, that we would have to, you know, raise it. So this is just to set a rate, it has nothing to do with the actual case we're going to talk about later in the public.
I don't know, I think it would be maybe better to go a little bit closer to the Marshwood number. You know, if we make it too much, then people aren't going to do it. And it would be nice to have some revenue where we can get it.
Yeah, and while it's nice to have the revenue, it also, you know, it also fills out the school and, you know, keeps, you know, keeps the staff employed and all those other things too, so. So what would you think, Aaron, like thirteen?
Twelve, fifteen? How low would you think? I was going to say between twelve and thirteen.
And that would be twelve?
No, it would be twelve thousand higher. But, I mean, I don't really know, I'm just thinking, you know, what would I, if I were going to do that for my child, I think, you know, that maybe like between ten and thirteen-ish would be kind of the range.
Mike, your thoughts?
I am really unprepared for this.
Yeah, I know, I was just throwing it at you.
I think, you know, you're in the ballpark anywhere in there. Kind of being towards, you know, a little bit whatever, I'm saying that probably thirteen in that realm, just to stay a little closer to Marshwood. I don't have anything to base that off of other than just numbers.
Right.
You know, math.
That's true. Yeah, and while, I understand that Marshwood gives us a way to look at it, Marshwood, the Marshwood tuition is lower than the Somersworth tuition was, when we were also tuitioning our students to Somersworth, because the cost of education is higher in New Hampshire than it is in Maine. So that's important to know. So I would not go lower than thirteen for that reason. You know, our tuition agreement with Somersworth hit more what the New Hampshire rate would have been for Somersworth, so.
And it included all your special ed?
And it did include all the special ed as well, that, oh, that's true.
That was not separate.
Oh, that's true.
It included all your special ed costs, you didn't pay separate for those.
That's true.
Like you do now for Marshwood.
No, 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 it did not. No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about when we actually tuitioned, not when we were part of the area agreement. We actually tuitioned, special ed was extra, but it was interior. Yeah, so, no, thank good, I wanted to make, yeah, because, but it was higher, it was probably about a thousand dollars higher for students, so.
Well, I'd be willing to. It makes things lower.
But I also understand, you know, we don't want to make it necessarily prohibitive if we think it's a good thing for us to do as a district. I think we should set a rate.
The thing, it's very hard, because we don't want to scaring people off. You know, with a tuition, frankly, we're just throwing numbers out anyway. But I think thirteen wouldn't be unreasonable.
If we were to tuition somebody to Somersworth right now, would it be?
I don't know. We started, so we had a three-year deal with Somersworth for when we moved all of our students to Marshwood, we allowed tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders to finish out there. And it started at eleven thousand and it went up three percent each year. It started at eleven-five, I think, and went up on three percent each year. So we're ending up at just over twelve. And that was three years ago now? Three years ago now, so.
So I'd say thirteen.
So thirteen kind of hits sort of where we are and then we can. Well, it seems like we're coming to a consensus of thirteen, maybe we might want to revisit it, you know, depending on how things go. So, our rate, do we need a professional, do we need a vote on that? Or just a consensus?
I think that's fine, because, like I said, you're going to vote on each individual request anyway, so we'll set the rate at that point. But that's basically what we'll do.
So each request is negotiable at that point, or?
That's what I was going to ask, that's a good question.
Well, it would be. I mean, each request is up to the board on what you're going to do. You don't, if you wanted to make a motion and set this as your tuition, then it would be consistent across the board. Or you can just do it, you know, as you approve each one, but that's up to you.
Well, I would probably prefer to set it, so that we don't have to be doing this-
And if you made a motion to set your tuition for Rollinsford Grade School, then it would be set until you decide to change it.
I was going to say, because it's a slippery slope, if you start every individual case, if you decide to talk about it.
I think that's a better way to go. And to be clear, I mean, we had a number of, Marshwood took, takes tuition students, individual tuition students, and they took a number of Rollinsford residents before we had a contract with them to take all of our, all of our seven through twelve students. But they picked and chose the students they took. They did not take children with special needs, they did not take students with special needs, they did not take students that they did not think would do very well at Marshwood. And they made it very clear that that's what they were doing. So, those kinds of decisions we can also make if we choose to. But I think setting a tuition rate, so that we don't have to revisit with every, shouldn't we get an influx?
Right. I think it's easier too, if someone calls and says, "Is this a possibility?" If you have a number.
At any point down the road, if the board decides to revisit that, you certainly could do that.
Right, right. And we're not guaranteeing it for the entire time they're here, we're guaranteeing it for the first year that they come in.
Would you, year by year, determine?
Well, no, I'm saying that our tuition rate would be, we could change the tuition rate at any time, in essence. I don't know, we'll have to figure out what that contract looks like, I guess, when we get there.
Would the official board include the school?
Not that I know of. We have had an interest in it and we have, I know that, I think staff in the past occasionally had people in, and I don't know if we made them pay or not. I was not on the board at that time. I would not have voted for having my staff pay for having my staff.
Usually, if it's too high, that's a, never mind. That's usually what they determine.
Yeah, that's true. All right, so a motion then, please, for setting a tuition rate.
I make a motion, please, tuition rate to thirteen thousand.
Second?
Second.
Second from Aaron. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Tuition is set for the foreseeable future. All right, that concludes that. Now, oh, Lord, we still have one to do, sorry. It'll probably be two months in a row. All right, we have our, let's do our, we're going to switch the order on these, and Mike, we will not expect you to answer anything about nine point two. It's the second reading of the ones we did way back in-
January.
Does anyone remember them? So, these were the policies for crisis prevention and response, emergency plans, employment references, student conduct, and student discipline, and due process. Those were the ones we did back in January for the first reading. And they are all recommended or required. So any further discussion on those?
Nobody will define to me.
And let's, then a motion to accept all of the policies under nine point two?
I make a motion to accept the policies under nine point two.
I second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Mike, please refrain. Aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, and now the first reading, and Mike, if you haven't had a chance to read them, we understand, this is the first reading, we are not taking any action on them this evening, we'll take action at our next meeting. So, mandatory code of conduct, reporting on employees, staff conduct, communicable disease, head lice, and apparently the actual medical term for head lice, which is pediculosis? All right, and reporting child abuse. So, questions, comments, concerns?
I had a question on the head lice.
Head lice too.
Yes. Students known to have head lice will remain in class provided the student is comfortable. Is this a real thing?
Yes.
Do they have to go further with that?
They do not, they have to be sent home. But oftentimes, the teachers will say, "They're uncomfortable," you know, and we will be that. A lot of times the parents will say, "I'll just come get them."
But then once they go home, they have to stay home until it's, they're treated, then they come back and they'll check them.
Okay.
I had head lice, it was very traumatic.
It is.
It was very-
A long time ago. We respect the child. We respect the child, you know, and, you know, the nurses, the district nurses sat with Lori Lane and went over it prior to your first reading on that name. That's, okay, just checking. Remembered. And they're only allowed in if the head lice have been treated and are no longer- They should be treated. There are homeopathic treatments, it doesn't have to be the pesticide treatment. All right, and actually, my question on that is, so, since apparently the old policy was really only about communicable diseases, only about head lice, do we have anything else on communicable diseases? Do we have any other policies? I didn't quickly see any.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about whether or not we should have some. Kudos to Maine for voting down the, taking the proper vote on that referendum there. All right, well, we'll leave that at that then. Now, it's interesting, I wrote these, I didn't print out the whole thing, I just wrote down the question. On staff conduct, I think, oh, that's it, so on GBEV, staff conduct, and I should pull it up, do you have it come up? There's something, thank you very much. It's very short, isn't it? I think I had a question about whether or not a collective bargaining agreement trumps the law, or the law, or the state law trumps the collective bargaining agreement.
The collective bargaining agreement can add to the law, but it can't take away from.
Okay. So if it is, for instance?
If it's in the law, it's in the law.
It can't broaden the law. It can narrow the law, but it can't broaden the law. Okay, that's what was my question, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or? All right then, that's our discussion period, we will move on. And we will revisit these next, at our next meeting for a vote, to approve or not. All right. Playground improvements, we've already gone over, right? And now we have a couple of personnel things we'll do here before we move to non-public. Dr. Gudomski, start us off on the retirement of Eric Thornton.
Yeah, the first one is from Eric Thornton. It says, "Thank you for, let me see, I'd be retiring from Rollinsford Grade School effective April 1st. My last day of work will be March 31st. It's been nice working with you, the staff, and among the students that have been here for so many years. Sincerely, Eric Thornton."
So we need a motion to accept his resignation?
Yes.
So, motion, please.
Make a motion to accept Eric Thornton's resignation.
And so somewhat reluctantly, I will ask, I will ask if there's any further discussion on Rick's resignation? He's done tremendous service here at the school. All right, then, no further discussion. All in favor of accepting Rick's resignation, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And the custodial nomination, we need a discussion on that.
We will be going into non-public after this, so then we have future meeting dates there at the end of the agenda. I am going to question, are we having the March SAU meeting? Often that's done just if we need one.
It is still scheduled. I can get in touch with the chair and see if they still would like that, or whether they're just going to do the-
The May, there's one in May as well, which is here, which is here as well, May 4. Traditionally, if we cut one out, it's usually the March meeting, but-
I will find out if there's a need.
Check that, another sale, thank you very much. School events, long list of those there, I think people know about those. So we'll move on with closing comments from visitors.
I'd like to clarify the play props and stuff. We do reuse those. Currently, the maid in Little Mermaid is wearing the costume from the housekeeper in Peter Pan. The benches that Mr. Bryant built for us have been used in at least two, if not three, plays. And last year, the maid- And last year, the Maisie's tree, this year is going to be Ariel's grotto. So just different things are going to be painted on. Very rarely, unless it's specific to something that we can't change, do we put things back up in the attic and just leave them there. Some of that stuff from the plays are from before Amanda or Jean did them. Last year, I think it was, yes, last year Jean found saddle trees up there that they wore for maybe a day, and the soul fell off. So some of that stuff is from like the 70s and the 80s. It's not stuff that we need.
So some can be reused.
Yes, and Jean, I know, would love to have a shed that she can get stuff and look through stuff to see what we need or what we have and move it. I mean, right now, because the play's a month away, we're storing stuff in the gym office and in the stairs to the attic on the stage so that we have it each night to practice. So if it was in a shed where at least other times we could get it without having to go in the attic, it would be much easier. And Tom, there are stairs to the attic besides those metal ones. Did you see those?
And they go straight up.
All right, thank you.
And the play is after the next board meeting, the 10th and 11th, hopefully.
Yeah, maybe. Everything has to come with a little test now. Maybe so. Tracy?
Tracy Lorian. I do know upstairs in the attic, there's an area of historical stuff. So we have some old desks and chairs and different things like that. I haven't been up there in a little while, but I do know that there are some stuff that are labeled up there also that are original with the building and stuff like that that has been used when we went, we did a, we set up a classroom in like a historical thing. That was so cool. So there are some stuff in the attic that are, I believe it's all labeled and stuff that is historic with the main building and that kind of stuff, so.
Don't get me wrong. I wasn't saying that everything up there is garbage.
Okay, that's, okay, that's good. That's good. We're not.
Can I just say one more thing?
Whatever.
It's not about the play.
Is it about the attic?
Yeah, but I'll be quick, I promise. And a shed. We, because we're an inquiry-based school, we can't plan that even every other year that we're going to be studying ancient civilization so we can pull out the ancient civilization stuff. We have stuff that, yeah, we try and reuse it, you know, using measuring cups and all that stuff. But we do have some stuff that's not used every year. But we also don't want to have to buy it again if it's used the third year. Do you know what I mean?
I do. Thank you very much. We appreciate, everybody's concerned about everything that's in the attic. School board members are not going to go through each thing and say, "This has to go to that." So believe me, that is not our intention here. Celia?
Other comments besides the attic?
Yes, please.
My child is one of the ones that was supposed to go on to the Young Inventors Convention. And we got an email this morning around 9:30 saying that it's been postponed due to the coronavirus with a yet-to-be-determined date. For the end-of-the-year school calendar, I have two comments. REC has already put out their start date of June 29th. So if a decision is made and we're going to go into the last week of June or something like that, could we just be kept in the loop? We do have an email address that you can reach us at, that Rich has. And if we have connections here at the school, just keep us informed because we would like to set up the 28th to be ready for camp. And we want to make sure it's feasible with the school, too. And then as a parent, I have the opposite perspective as Mike. My children don't necessarily get ready to be on time. So I really encourage you to plan ahead for the future and maybe put it on throughout the year, an extra 15 minutes, because it's hard for my kids to adjust partly through the year and to have to only do it for eight to 12 weeks. When you've already been in a schedule that's consistent for the last six months, it's sometimes difficult to change.
Thank you. And I would just remind you that also they have the REC Commission be in touch with the school itself too.
Yep.
So they know what's going on. Any other comments from? All right, any closing comments from the board?
One question.
Yes.
So with the withdrawal passing, what's the next step?
Yes, excellent. The withdrawal has passed, which means that as of July 1st, we will no longer be part of SAU 56. We already have a contract in place that has been signed, and I assume that now.
Yeah, I believe the next step, I didn't get in touch with the State Board of Education. They've already approved the plan. That's already gone to them, and we've already got a notification. I believe the next step is it goes back to them and they identify an SAU number for Rollinsford. So I'll bring that back to the board.
So there's really not much we need to do then between now and July?
No, essentially, except getting our new SAU number. The work was all done ahead of time, including the contract with Summersworth. So I feel that the withdrawal committee did an excellent job getting everything set up. Bob and he both worked and got things done for us, and it's great.
Yeah, the contract is all set. The budget is all set. Everything's in place for next year.
Yeah, which is nice. And if it had not passed, we'd now be scrambling. So thank goodness it passed. Anything else, Mike?
No, that was, that was, thank you.
That'll be out. All I'm saying is there's a lot of stuff up there. Once that wall comes down, I'm sure there's a lot of historic stuff there. The play stuff I saw looked like, as you said, had been there since the first run of Cory's line. So, yeah.
Kansas is still hanging. That's enough. Okay. Let's not have a back and forth. This is just comment. Thanks, Tom. Well done. Well done. I can't wait to see some of that stuff. I'm good. Well, I'd like to talk about the attic.
Look at your chair.
Although, thank you for finding a room because I wanted a little more distance.
Yeah, this is better.
So thank you very much for that.
We'll be back.
Thank you. We do have non-public, so we'll take a roll call vote to move to non-public, please, and see if anybody else, or we see you next time. Judy Nelson. Yes, Tom Coons. Erin Kavanaugh. Mike Love.